Meeting of Monday, September 8, 2025. It's called the order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman?
Here.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Drinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Cassad?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mario? Councilmember Mia Proton Sundberg?
Here.
There's a quorum.
Please join me in invocation. O Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decision. Let's our city with honorable citizens, industry, sound indication, and good government. Unite our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of the community. Please join in me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with individual individual land, liberty, and justice for all. Land acknowledgement. The city of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories of and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Yidda, Rappa, and the Cota peoples, past and present. But we also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up our state, make up the state of Colorado indigenous peoples that remain committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As these words that we knowledge were spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional home lands and to the vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed, and we are called to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Executive session update. During the executive session, we received legal advice. Approval of the minutes, motion is in order for the approval of the minutes. From August 25, 2025.
Minutes.
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by?
Or Bergen?
Yes.
Taken by Councilmember Bergen to approve the minutes from August 25, 2025. Discussion? Seeing no discussion. Call for the question on the approval of the minutes for August 25, 2025.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor Woches?
Councilmember Hancock? Mayor Proton Sundberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the August 25, 2025 city council meeting.
A motion is in order for adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I motion to adopt the agenda removing item sixteen A.
To move by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by?
Mayor Second.
Taken by Councilmember Lawson to approve the adoption of the agenda with the exception of item number sixteen A. Discussion? I see none, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor Woches?
Mayor Proton? Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, I'll be getting back on eScribe.
Okay. The motion passes with eight yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Coombs and Mario to adopt the agenda with item sixteen A removed.
Next item before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. Item number nine C one to nine C two. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, motion to approve nine C one through nine C two.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Mayor Second.
Taken by Councilmember Lawson to approve the consent calendar of motions, item number nine C one to nine C two. Discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question of the adoption of the consent calendar on motions.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor Woches? Next question before us is?
Mayor, one moment, the motion passed unanimously to approve the calendar for motions.
Seem to be racing ahead here. Uh, next item before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Item number ten A one to ten B two. Motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve ten A one through ten B two.
I'm sorry, who was first there?
Curtis.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by?
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen to approve the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten B two. Discussion?
Mayor, I think we have one person who wants to speak on ten A four.
Okay. Very well.
Jeanie, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. This is Jeanie Davis, I'm a member of the Aurora Commission for Older Adults, and we support this resolution expressing the council's acknowledgement of the completion of and its support for the older adult needs assessment. We began working on this project in 2022, but the intent to incorporate measurable, deliverable, and actionable recommendations that the entire city of Aurora could implement, it's been quite a journey. The assessment evaluates the needs and services for older adults based on an environmental scan and community assessment conducted by the consultant JSI. Most importantly, the report identifies gaps in services and provides recommendations to enhance support for older adults. Aurora has a significant older adult population with nearly sixty-seven thousand individuals aged sixty and older, representing seventeen point one percent of the city's total population. The median age of older adults in Aurora is sixty-eight point eight years. The population of older adults aged sixty or plus is projected to increase by approximately two thousand individuals every two years. Aurora has a higher percentage of veterans at seventeen point three percent compared to Denver's eleven point five and Colorado's fourteen point oh. We do praise the effort that Councilmember Angela Lyson for her commitment to the well-being of the older adult community, and we certainly appreciate the support of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Leadership Team who contributed to the completion of the report and who will facilitate departmental presentations throughout the city to begin the implementation process. The recent interview featuring Nicole Akemi on Channel Seven News and the article published in the Aurora Sentinel last week have highlighted the initiative the city intends to undertake to hand members of this commission forward to continuing its involvement and thanks the Aurora City Council for the honor of doing so.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on any of the agenda items? It's removed and seconded, is there further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances.
The consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances passes unanimously.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number eleven A?
Item eleven A is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 2025-103, approving Phase One of the Americans with Disabilities Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff?
Good evening, Mayor Kaufman, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Kaufman and members of council, my name is Carlin Shore. I'm the Title II ADA Coordinator here at the city, and I'm here to present Phase One of our ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan for Public Comment. The ADA is a federal anti-discrimination law which mandates that state and local governments develop policies and procedures to prevent discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all of their programs, services, and activities. One specific requirement of the ADA is that state and local governments evaluate their services, programs, and activities on an ongoing basis and develop a compliance plan to address any identified barriers to access resulting from that evaluation. This requirement is referred to in the Americans with Disabilities Act as a self-evaluation and transition plan. In 2022, the city began the process of reevaluating its programs, services, and activities to develop a more robust compliance plan to ensure that the requirements of the ADA and other disability rights laws were being addressed at the city. Phase One of the new self-evaluation and transition plan addresses the city's public right-of-way infrastructure, specifically looking at curb ramps, crosswalks, sidewalks, and pedestrian signals. As a result of those key findings and based on input we received from the public from surveys and focus groups, we have developed an ADA compliance plan for the public right-of-way which recommends a number of policy updates and process improvements and which also focuses on better integrating ADA improvements into existing capital and street maintenance programs. One example is the recommendation that the city adopt and implement a policy directing that if streets are resurfaced as part of Aurora's annual maintenance program, any adjacent non-compliant curb ramps are reconstructed, including by adding dome panels to curb ramps without detectable warning surfaces. Another example of one of the recommended transition plan goals is to develop an ADA layer to our geospatial mapping system to track and help prioritize ADA improvements across existing and future public works projects. At this time, we seek public comment on the draft plan which has been provided in full in the council meeting packet. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of our city council, for your time this evening.
Katie, does anybody wish to speak on this issue?
No.
Seeing none, the public hearing is, I'm sorry, are the questions between council members to the staff? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed and a motion is in order?
Mayor, motion to move item number eleven A.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Cassad, seconded by? I'm sorry, seconded by who?
It should be Lawson.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson? Discussion?
Oh, sorry.
You're muted, Councilmember Lawson.
Um, Mayor, it was not me, that's, I don't want to take someone a second.
Moved by Councilmember Cassad, seconded by?
Well, I'll go ahead and second it if?
By Councilmember Lawson, thank you, Councilmember Lawson. Discussion? So seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number eleven A.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item eleven A.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number twelve A?
Item twelve A is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty-six and pending sections one thirty-four, four thirty, and one thirty-four, four fifty-one of the city code pertaining to automated vehicle identification system penalty notice.
Motion is in order, I'm sorry, brief presentation by staff. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Hamsler, present?
He is, I think he was muted.
Very well.
My apologies. I'm Lieutenant Chris Hamsler from the Aurora Police Department Traffic Collection. The police department is asking for an amendment to the city ordinance pertaining to photo enforcement. The, we would like to amend the ordinance so that we can have unmanned devices when it comes to photo speed enforcement, in the past we had manned vehicles, and in the past we had issues with staffing and retaining employees to operate those vehicles. So this ordinance change would allow us to have unmanned devices that would capture speeding violations. The ordinance changes would also require that a city employee or a contractor on the behalf of the city would review all violations before a penalty assessment would be issued. Also, a city employee or contractor would be given the ability to refer any violation of over twenty-five miles per hour or more in excess of the posted speed limit to be investigated by a police officer to investigate as a traffic offense.
Very well, questions from council members to the staff? Seeing none, a motion is in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, motion to approve, make sure I have the right one, twelve A.
Removed by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Sundberg.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Sundberg to approve item number twelve A, discussion?
Mayor Gardner?
Councilmember Gardner?
Um, I don't support this, our voters have turned down red light cameras, which is a very similar concept. I'm not sure, I've read a lot on the effectiveness of these kinds of tools, and I'm not sure that if there's really much effectiveness there. I think this is using public safety to generate revenue. And again, I feel like our voters have pretty clearly said they do not want cameras monitoring their traffic behavior, so I'm going to be a no vote on this.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Um, Councilmember Hancock?
On the other hand, Councilmember Gardner, I have gotten a lot of complaints about not the regrets that people have had in eliminating the red light cameras because of the excessive speeding that has been witnessed and the increased number of accidents. And I have also, you know, advised people, if you want this back, then you need to, you know, work on getting that back on the ballot. But I think this goes in a way to help us mitigate some of the issues that we're having with speeding, so I do support this.
Further, further discussion? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I have significant reservations because we do want to make sure that we're protecting people's civil liberties in relation to surveillance. However, I'm also very concerned about the deaths, particularly pedestrian and cyclist deaths caused by speeding. Um, and it sounds like, and Lieutenant Hamsler, maybe you can let me know if this is correct, it's not that they're automatically going to get a violation, it's that then a further investigation would be required, is that correct?
Lieutenant Hamsler?
Um, the device would capture the violation, so it would capture the speed through the radar system, it would capture a picture of the front license plate, the driver, and then the rear license plate. And then at that point, it would go through a review process from the company, and then it would go to an employee that we just recently hired here at the police department who would then review that material to make sure that the violation actually occurred before any type of notice or penalty assessment were to be issued to the violator.
Okay, so there's a human, multiple step human review process where?
Yes, there is, like I said, we just hired this past week an employee who will work for the police department, he's a contract employee, and he has twenty-two years of service, he just retired from the Denver Police Department doing the same thing, so he's very knowledgeable in this field.
Were there questions that?
Mayor Protem Sundberg? I, I recognize the sensitivity with respect to people not wanting municipalities or governments watching their moves and their vehicles. We have a mesh camera system set up around our city where we can track a vehicle, if it's a looting police, quite well. We had hundreds and thousands of dollars in grant money so that businesses could have numerous cameras to protect themselves. Ring cameras are ubiquitous now in neighborhoods. We've had some horrific? Uh, we've had some horrific fatal high-speed accidents. It's, let's just say Jewel and Old Tom Morris. Urevan and Quincy, uh, three-digit speeds there. I receive constant, uh, complaints and requests for speed mitigation in, in my ward, especially. Uh, the last program that we tried with this, it was a company that misrepresented the accuracy and it had to have a human being in the vehicle. And the previous police chief didn't wrap his arms around it like he should have, in my estimation. Uh, I'm willing to give this another try, especially if it's, if it's accurate and, uh, it's, it, it's cost neutral. And I think it'll fill the gap where we have a severe shortage of our Police Department. Um, you know, we, we, we approved when we had an extra three hundred thousand dollars to put radar guns in, in, uh, our vehicles. So I think it just makes sense with, with, uh, what our cus- excuse me, I say customers. Residents are, are quite literally pleading for at times.
Further discussion?
Mayor Gardner?
Uh, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, first of all, the fact that we have gone too far as a society and as government in surveillance. Isn't to me an effective argument for further increasing that surveillance. It's actually an argument, we should scale that back. Um, and, you know, I appreciate, Councilmember Hancock, you pointing out. You've heard from residents that want this. While in the same token, I've heard from residents that appreciate my consistency and the fact that I voted against. This last failed program that Councilmember Sundberg just referenced, um, was an abject failure. And I re- I've heard from residents that appreciate that I have been consistent on voting against this because that's what our voters clearly said, so. Um, you know, there are obviously going to be constituents on both sides of the issue, um, but that's, um, you know, I feel pretty confident in my vote.
Okay, uh, Lieutenant Amslar? Uh, these are limited in terms of where they're going to be positioned, correct?
That's correct. The state law has not changed, so they can only be on residential streets with a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour on, or under. Uh, in construction zones, school zones, or on streets that are adjacent to a municipal park. Now, council does have the option, if they want to put it on a major thoroughfare like such as Chambers or Alameda Avenue. That they can pass a resolution to permit the designation of a photo enforcement zone. Um, that being said, the city still has to show that, um, there's five years of data that show complaints, uh, traffic crashes. Speeding issues in those areas before that resolution can be, um, passed.
Very well, thank you. Uh, further discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coombs?
I actually do have a follow-up question, um, now that I think about it. Do we have a sense of, for this vendor, um, who has access? To the data, the photos, the information about violators and violation?
Yes, my understanding is because they're actually creating a back office for just our use, that it would only be. The Aurora Police Department and then the, the vendor.
And do we have a guarantee that that's the case, that only we and the vendor will have access to the data?
That would be something that I would have to confirm with them.
Okay, I'm gonna have to withhold my support until I, um.
Councilmember Bergen and then Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, as a ward council member, um, for nine years, have had, um, numerous, um, requests for. Um, you know, for the speeding violations and so forth, and in, I would say in the last few years, it has escalated to, um, just constant. Um, whether it be on Nextdoor, on, um, Facebook messages, um, emails to me, phone calls to me. Pleading that we have police, um, enforce the speeding on residential roads, um, and. Uh, you know, unfortunately, we don't have enough police to, to patrol, so I will be in support of this because. Um, just from a safety perspective, and I do appreciate the privacy, um, perspective of Councilmember Gardner. Um, I, I believe that the, it's probably in the contract that the privacy, um, is protected. Um, I, you know, I wish you had the answer to that, but I think it is.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Gardner?
I. I have a question upon something that was just said. Because the argument has been made could prevent, or at least contribute to preventing some of the high-profile pedestrian. Um, traffic deaths that we have seen recently, but what I just heard was, on our major thoroughfares where those have happened, we would not be placing these devices anyways. At least as currently constructed.
Uh, Lieutenant Amslar?
That is correct. However, a, a resolution can be passed by council to designate a certain portion of roadway on our major. Um, arterial roads as a photo enforcement zone. So if council decided that they wanted to designate a certain portion of the road based on the fact that we have had crashes. We have had, you know, plenty of complaints from citizens that there is speeding going on in that area. We could then, um, designate that portion of roadway as one of those enforcement zones.
Um, just let me say that I look forward to, to doing a resolution as we, as we move forward after this. Uh, because I, I think what, uh, let me, uh, Lieutenant Amslar, is this, uh? And does this work twenty-four hours a day or is it only doing hours a day like?
No, this will be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We have two automated devices that will be used. They're both also, um, movable and portable, so they won't be in the same area all the time, so we can move them to different areas where we have problems.
Great, I live off Parker Road. Let me tell you what, then sometimes two in the morning, they are racing out there. And, uh, hopefully this would, would could be a deterrent later on, or should we pass out a resolution to expand, uh, the jurisdictions? Councilmember Lawson?
Yeah, um, Lieutenant, um, Amslar, I just want to make sure about, I know we're focused on the zones that you're talking about. But for the other thing, the other corridor, like you're saying for Chambers or Smoky Hill or something like that. Um, you said it has to be five years of data, of crash data, in order for something like that to be approved?
Correct, crash data or also citizen complaints, that, that type of data.
Okay, um, would it also to be basically, it couldn't cover the whole, it would just have to be a portion of those roads? Where the hotspots would be, correct?
My understanding that is correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Further, uh, yeah, uh, Mayor Fredem?
Yeah, I just want to indicate about a high-profile death on a scooter for a sixteen-year-old named Dimitri who was killed at East Wesley and Dunkirk. It was at night, he was riding in the, um, uh, the bicycle lane there. And a block and a half further to the, uh, southeast, a gentleman named Alberto was killed on the sidewalk walking his dog. Okay, and the speed was a factor there. And in, in. Talking with the neighbors, they are in, uh, pleading for, or, for enforcement in this area, and then the speed limit there, by the way, is. Is about, I think it's thirty miles an hour, so that's an example of, um, one stretch of street in which neighbors are literally crying out. Uh, two fatalities with a block and a half each other of that type of speed restricted area. Uh, and of course, our traffic department had to respond with, uh, ideas and, uh, very practical suggestions and implementing things. Um, such as, um, a more condensed pedestrian zone to reduce, uh, reduce traffic and, uh, so forth. So this, this does happen, okay, uh, in thirty mile an hour areas, thirty-five mile an hour areas.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, it's offensive to me, uh, the implication that by not supporting this, I don't care about traffic fatalities in our city. Um, you know, frankly.
I never said that.
Mayor. We could bring forward an ordinance banning vehicles driving in our city, and I can guarantee you that would stop all accidents from happening in our city. It is offensive, the implication that I don't care about traffic fatalities because I also care about civil liberties and.
Okay, um.
Mayor, can I respond?
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I didn't mention your name, Councilmember Gardner. You did bring up the fact, though, that these things are not ha- these high-profile, as you said, things are, are, are not happening on, on certain roadways. And, and in fact, they are. So the, if you want to imply that upon yourself, go, go right ahead, but I didn't, I didn't say that about you directly.
Uh, further discussion, uh, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, um, in fact, what I was pointing out was the hypocrisy of bringing up these high-profile incidents. When these devices cannot be placed in those locations where these are happening. And in fact, state law, and, and this wasn't part of the presentation, but state law specifically limits where we can place these. So in fact, where these incidents have happened, we will not be able to place these devices necessarily. And so again, to make the implication that we are, we are addressing an issue, we're not addressing an issue. Uh, it might. Thank you. Am I correct in, uh, believing and understanding that this type of a device can be on a thirty mile an hour roadway? Where there were two fatalities?
Okay, um, uh, Councilmember Hancock, come, sorry.
Lieutenant, can you, can we get an answer?
Lieutenant, can I answer the question? Can you answer the question?
Can that, can that device be there?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Gardner, if you wish to answer the question?
We want the officer to answer.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, it can be on a thirty mile an hour roadway.
Thank you.
Okay, um, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, then, uh, call for the question on the adoption of item number, um, twelve A.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Coombs and Councilmember Gardner to adopt item twelve A.
We're clearing now for leisure.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Murillo. Um, I, I, um, I hit the wrong, although I would like to amend my vote to a no.
Very well.
Okay.
We're clear now, please read the title to item number twelve B.
Item twelve B is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty-seven. Amending section fifty thirty-six of the city code pertaining to the assessment of interpreter fees against defendants who fail to appear for trial.
Uh, brief presentation by staff?
Good evening, Council, Candace Atkinson, Court Administrator, Detention Director. This is just updating the current ordinance from, um, thirty-five dollar fee for anybody that misses a jury trial that has. An interpreter of two ninety. I do want to emphasize that. Um, the judge still has the right to waive these fees if they're indigent or if there's extenuating circumstances. Um, so it's not a new ordinance, it's just updating it, um, and as an example, we had one person that FTA for jury trial twice. And it was over eighteen hundred dollars both times, um, because it was a special language. So that's why we looked at changing the fee. Any questions?
Questions of, uh, staff? Uh, seeing none, uh, thank you, Candace. Uh, motion is in order?
Mayor, wishing to make. Okay, wishing to move item number, uh, thirteen A.
It's been, I'm sorry, twelve B.
Twelve D. Twelve D.
Uh, it's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Kasaw, seconded by.
Hancock.
Uh, Councilmember Hancock to approve item number twelve B, discussion?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Coombs?
Um, so I remain concerned that this increases a fee that specifically only applies. To people who need interpretation for languages other than English. Um, I think we should be looking at fees that would apply to any person that fails to appear rather than. Fees that specifically apply to people who speak English or Spanish or Latin or something. Um, so I would like to make a substitute motion to, uh. Continue this item, uh, for one night, to look at what that, that date is. Um, so that we can look at other alternatives that don't specifically penalize individuals based on.
Let me, uh, uh, let me just hold off just one second and let me just see if there, because I'll, I'll ask for motions and then. I'll take yours as, that you made that motion. Uh, is there any questions to staff?
Yes, Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, yes, can, uh, I get clarification on who this act, this fee is actually for? My understanding was it is only for people who did not show up?
Yes, Councilmember Bergen, that's correct. It's only if they fail to appear from the jury trial.
Okay, so.
And that's just jury trials, not any other hearings.
Okay, just jury trials, and if they do appear, then obviously we provide interpreters.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Candace.
Councilmember Murillo?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, no, I, the, the impact to folks who need interpretation, in my opinion. You know, if we're a customer service oriented organization, um, providing interpretation is part of that role. Um, I don't agree with charging, uh, a specific fee or an additional fee, um, to folks who, um, would need that. Um, folks who don't show up in any other situation don't have to pay that particular fee. Um. Yeah, so I don't support.
Councilmember Murillo?
Uh, Mayor, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, there's something here, let me.
I know, they're blocking, I, these blue things are blocking our hands, I think, but. Yeah, I just want to make a point. Again, it's failure to appear, and there's plenty of opportunity. We give plenty of notices, um, on their times, so. Well, I, I mean, if you can't show up for your jury trial, you should, then, then you need to pay the interpreter.
You're, uh, Councilmember Hancock?
Mayor? I mean, this is an expensive, uh, proposition, and I feel like, uh, to, uh, Candace's point. Eighteen hundred dollars spent on someone who didn't bother to show up for their trial. And people know in advance that this is coming. It's not a surprise to them. And I mean, if they speak a language that requires an interpreter, that's an extra, additional expense to the city. I think everybody else probably speaks English and knows how to come to the trial. So I don't know if you can understand why we're arguing this. If you don't show up, we should not have to bear that burden. You should pay for that. There should be a consequence. This is adulting. Whether you're in this country or somewhere else, you have to pay if you don't show up for your own trial with a service that we're providing to help you go through a trial.
Councilmember Murillo?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, I don't even want to get into that logic, but, um, I think, again. Sorry, I'm just looking at people's faces. Um. Um, I, I, like I said, there are other people who don't show up for court, then they wouldn't be responsible for this fee. So yeah, it is disproportionately impacting folks. Yeah, there are going to be people, I'm not necessarily empathizing with folks who don't show up to court. Although there are many reasons why that happens, and let's be real, our court system is not that efficient sometimes. Um, uh, having supported various folks through the criminal legal system. Um, having to do X, Y, Z reason, you have to reschedule, blah, 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 right? So that, that's a separate issue. The point is that this is a cost only borne to a certain constituent. Um, not to everyone. If you don't show up, yeah, I get that. I'm not empathizing with folks who don't show up, but, um, yeah, I don't support.
Councilmember Jarski? You're, um.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I don't think that this proposal is being brought forward, um, as a way for us to profit. Um, off of, you know, for folks' mishaps or, or what have you. Um, if we were to charge everybody that fails to appear. Um, obviously, we're not charging for an interpreter for those who don't need an interpreter, so at that point. Um, I think we're discussing equity, um, a- a- and it turns it into, um, profiting. Off of charging people for this. So this is specifically targeting folks that need an interpreter. Because that is a cost that the city is bearing, that the city is incurring. And we are not looking to profit off of this from anybody. We are only seeking to be reimbursed for those who fail to appear for their jury trial. So it's gone all the way through all of the hearings to a jury trial. They know when that is. Um, and if there's an emergency or something else, um, you know, they, they have the opportunity to have that pushed back. But if they have not contacted their defense attorney to give a reason why, and they just flat out fail to appear in court. Um, and we've brought in a specialized interpreter, we are only seeking to recoup that cost. Otherwise, i- i- if we go with what you're proposing, Councilmember Coombs, we are seeking to profit. Off of anyone's failure to appear. off of anyone's failure to appear, which I do not support.
Uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Mayor, um, I have a question before I move on to any motion. When this fee is charged, where does that fee go? Does it go to a designated fee for interpretation? Does it go to the general fund? Does it go to court administration? Where is this money going?
Yes, Councilmember Coombs, it just goes right into the general fund with the rest of our revenue.
Okay, oh, um, let me, let me just say quick, I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs. Uh, if, if, uh, if you have more questions of Candace, cause otherwise your motion is in order. Uh, are there quite more questions of staff?
I guess, Mayor.
Go ahead.
My concern there is that then, that does sound like we are just profiting, we're just putting it in the general fund, we're not dedicating it toward um, interpretation specifically and covering the costs of interpretation.
Motion is in order, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, as noted, having this go into the general fund means that, in fact, we can do whatever we want with that. So we are essentially profiting off of people, not the hearing who require interpretation. Um, and again, what I think would make more sense is addressing the reasons why people are not appearing, um, right? Our online docketting system is not particularly user-friendly um, and does not provide clear information, um, for people who are looking for their court date. Um, we don't have virtual court, uh, available, which most courts do have. Um, and has been demonstrated to reduce, uh, failures to appear. Um, and we have inadequate systems related to text reminders and our ability as a city to know. Do people get and open their text reminder? So I think we just have several steps that you could take to address failure to appear for all people, including people who speak another language. By pursuing this option, we are taking into our general fund penalty money focused on only people who would require an interpreter. So the motion is to continue this item to October eighth of, or October sixth, sorry, of twenty twenty-five, um, and take that opportunity to identify how we could implement those other items and look at a fee that applies to all failures to appeal, not specifically on people who require it.
Okay, okay, let me see if I can condense your, to your motion, uh, is to continue uh, for the purposes of looking at, um, what, how.
To address failures to appear and penalties that are.
Okay, um, okay, that's a motion. Uh, is there a second to that motion? Then the motion.
Second, Murillo.
Uh, it's been seconded by Councilmember Murillo. Uh, further discussion? Um, uh, seeing none, then, um, call for the question on the, uh, Coombs motion. To continue to October sixth?
Mayor.
Um, I'm sorry, Al, may I vote yes?
The motion does not pass with seven no votes, four yes votes for Mayor, Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember Medina, and Councilmember Murillo.
Very well, um, the motion is in order.
Mayor, we have a motion already from Councilmember Casal, seconded by Councilmember Hancock.
Standing corrected, um, the further discussion on the, uh, Casal Hancock motion. Uh, seeing none, um, uh, call for the question on the, um, Casal Hancock motion for the approval of, uh, item number twelve B.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Medina, Murillo to adopt item twelve B.
Uh, with the third now, please read the title to item number thirteen A.
Item thirteen A is finalizing of ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty-five, delegating to the city manager the authority to appoint and remove the court administrator.
A brief presentation by staff? Or unless Councilmember Gardner, do you wanna give the presentation?
No, I mean, we've talked about this in a prior council meeting as well as an executive session. I don't have a presentation, but would like to motion to approve thirteen A.
Brief presentation by staff.
Um, Mayor, Council, this is, uh, City Manager Jason Bachelor, uh, under the charter. Uh, the charter allows council to, um, uh, direct the, uh, hiring and firing of the court administrator position, uh, to, uh, someone else or another group. Uh, this ordinance would make that, um, report, uh, to me for those purposes.
Questions of staff? Uh, questions of staff? I see none, a motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve thirteen A.
Moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by.
Bergen.
Um, seconded by Councilmember Bergen to approve item number thirteen A, discussion.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, uh.
Sundberg.
Oh, uh, Mayor for Jim Sundberg.
I think we should hold off on this one, I think the timing is bad, I think this is going to trigger an immediate, uh, act of litigation that could cost our city an untold amount of money, uh, through a type of breach of contract. Uh, I'm wondering why this wasn't introduced years ago. Uh, I've seen the court administrator come in and try to affect positive change and disrupt the status quo, and you just disrupt the status quo, people are threatened. And, um, she's been undermined and sabotaged at every level. The human resources department and legal department has been weaponized against her in at least close to two dozen. Uh, frivolous, baseless, false accusations that have cost our city a lot of money. Uh, the court administrator has demonstrated in some of our meetings that the great progress she's made. Uh, she's extended invitations to council members to come visit the detention center and the court system, uh, and how many people took advantage of that? How many people took advantage of that to go visit and look at the strengths and the weaknesses and the opportunities and the threats of, of those departments, of, of, of all that she's overseeing? How many people went to see firsthand, to learn firsthand? You could raise your hand now. Um, I think, you know, she, she invited an audit within her own realm and department. And the old saying, every good deed goes, uh, I guess, unpunished, she was, uh, I think she should be applauded for that, but I think at this time, this should wait, I think this should go into a mediated form of people, like adults, just sitting down and talking through a number of issues that could save our city from going through a heavily litigious matter. Thank you.
That's what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, put my hand down. Um, for me, uh, you know, I, I know that we're being told that, that, you know, this isn't to be made, uh, a personal matter, but this is absolutely a personal matter and it, and it is about the person, it's not about the position. Um, just today, uh, uh, our court administrator was denied by H R, uh, to assign an interim court administrator while she is out on a much-needed surgery. So she is now considering postponing her surgery. Um, because her job and her position means so much to her. Um, she has been put through countless frivolous, um, lawsuits. And I just, I find it really interesting that, you know, our city attorney is, is, is saying that he can absolutely defend a breach of contract here. But in speaking with one of the most top-rated, which our own city attorney admitted, is one of the most top-rated, um, employment attorneys in the state, um, she has a different opinion. That this is absolutely a breach of contract, we will be sued, but it goes far beyond that. It goes far beyond that. And myself and another council member have brought to the attention of our city attorney, of city staff members flat out lying about our court administrator. We have brought to the attention of our city attorney blatant, blatant discrimination. Uh, things that she was denied that male council appointees were given. Um, I even provided our city attorney with a copy of one of those emails. So for those who think that this would only be litigation over a breach of contract, you're wrong. This would be litigation over a hostile work environment. This would be, this would be litigation over discrimination, and it is blatant, blatant discrimination. Um, I've been discriminated many times in my life, I'm never one to pull that card. Um, this is blatant discrimination against, against a woman. Um, so, so for all, for, for all of that, anybody on this council who doesn't think that immediate litigation is, is, isn't coming, you are wrong. And, and, and I feel so confident that she will win, you are exposing our city. We will pay out, this will cost the taxpayers dollars, and there are council members that will look very foolish. I also would like to read, uh, something that was sent to me, um, from a subordinate um, of our court administrator that was sent to somebody else. I just want you to know that I truly appreciate everything you have done for me and my team. It brings comfort in knowing that I have a leader and boss who sees me and not just sees a body that's required to perform a function. My conversation with Councilmember Jurinsky was also truly fruitful. In my thirty-two year career, I've never had a direct, personal conversation with a council member. Especially not one telling me that they appreciate me. Although I love our team, I do not like the Aurora City government. However, I spoke with the sheriff of Denver and informed him that I will respectfully decline the position. Thank you for everything. Our court administrator is so loved by her subordinates. Once, once she was able to weed out, um, some bad actors. Um, and once she was able to overcome bad policy left in place from somebody who was here for thirty years. Uh, and, and, and stabilize, um, and recruit and, and fill our detention center and, and, and and raise our employment numbers. We have, we have key personnel in this city saying they don't like us because of this. And, 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 and I know what one of my colleagues is gonna say, he's gonna voicefully say, what, it doesn't matter what city staff thinks. We are, we are the legislative body. Correct, that's correct. This is bad policy, this is retaliation, this is about the person, not the position. We will immediately be sued, this is blatant discrimination, this is a hostile work environment. Um, I really don't know what else to say, but I would plead to my colleagues to not do this. Uh, this, I find this absolutely unacceptable. Um, I, I am speaking with subordinates of our court administrator, um, but they're ready to walk out over this. Men and women who, who hold a thirty-two year career, um, in public safety, I think that speaks volumes. And I think for those who haven't given the court administrator the time to give her side of the story, because I am telling you, um, one city employee has already been caught in a lie. Um, emails have come forward showing blatant discrimination. I think for any council member who's willing to cast a vote on this tonight and has not sat down with our court administrator and listened to what she has to say, because in a policy committee meeting, when, when she did try to speak up, uh, she was shouted down by a certain council member who I'm sure is getting ready to shout at me, and that's okay. Um, but I, I, I would just caution any council member voting on this tonight without speaking directly to the court administrator and, and allowing her to, to explain her side of the story or taking it one step further and going and speaking with her subordinates and finding out how much love and respect she has. So with that, I respectfully urge my colleagues to vote no on this tonight.
Thank you. Uh, let me just say this, um, this is not a demotion. Uh, this is merely, and this exists, uh, in law, in our charter, the ability to make this decision. And what it effectively does is it says, instead of having eleven bosses, she would have one. And that, and I will tell you this would make my life a lot easier because, and this is why. Because I'm here full-time, your mayor is a full-time position. And that I am often left with dealing with, um, differences uh, between, you know, different departments and things like this. And this can be withdrawn by, uh, this reorganization and having one boss, and that's a city manager who is entrusted to run the operations of this governor, government, your mayor is not, and a city manager from a government. And so it takes me out of the role that this position was never intended to be. And so, and, and let me tell you this, from day one, um, as, as a mayor, there have been always tension, always tension, different, uh, uh, different levels between uh, different administrators, uh, between the, um, this position and different departments of, of city government. And, uh, and so I got to where I was having meetings on a quarterly basis with all four council appointees, uh, just to work out the differences. And there, there were problems, I think, uh, there were, there have been problems with, um, uh, the, uh, presiding judge, uh, have been some problems with uh, the, you know, the prior, um, uh, city attorney, uh, in, in, in the city manager, um, but, um, that, right now, that it's, there's, there's you know, there's no daylight between, and, and there, I think there are specific reasons why the, uh, city attorney and the, uh, presiding judge report directly to council and not to the city manager. But there is really no reason why a department head, uh, would be reporting to the city manager. This is the only department head that doesn't report to the city manager. Um, that, that is not, you know, again, uh, the city attorney and, and the chief judge are different. And so I would hope that, that, that this is adopted tonight. And again, this is not, there's no reduction in pay, there's no reduction in compensation. And the, the issue that's raised about the comp, each, each package was negotiated, uh, with the, um, uh, with a council appointee separately, and it was a negotiation. So there are, none of them are the same. And so, but that's something that we can always look at when we renegotiate um, those, those contracts to, to change them. Uh, and so further discussion. Uh, Councilmember Coombs. I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs and Councilmember Hancock.
I just wanted to note for the record, we have been implied otherwise. Before we hired this court administrator, I asked that we separate these for the, the admini- court administrator and the Dale detention, um, you know, that those not be one position and that they be under the city's, for policy. Because it is a typical system we have, it is common in pretty much every other jurisdiction in the state, pretty much every other municipality. Have the court administrator not be the same person that oversees detention for one, and for two, that they be in the reporting structure for cities, because they're not a judge who's required to be a separate branch from the executives, they're not the attorney who's required to advise all departments. Um, and so that, and they're not the city manager who acts as the executive. Um, so there are clear policy meetings, which I tried to advocate for and was ignored at that. Um, so there are clear policy meetings which I tried to advocate for and which were ignored at that time. Um, and so when we were having our executives have to talk about how to hire the I said I didn't put it to be one position. Um, and that further discussion about how to be a position. And I continue to believe that that's the right thing to do. Um, and yeah, so that's, that is why I support this. Because I, in fact, always supported it as soon as I knew that we've had the opportunity.
Councilmember Hancock, I'm sorry. All right, are you finished, Councilmember Coombs? I'm sorry.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Councilmember Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I do not, as a person who's fair, the newest person next to Councilmember Casal on this council, I don't know what previously happened before. But I do understand that with Candace, she has admirably done her job. She has supporters and detractors on both sides. But what I'm concerned about is some of the areas in which I feel the administrator position is in over their head, particularly as it relates to the information technology portion of this job. Um, we don't have the requirements even stated as to what is needed so that we can effectively run our court so that we are, as a city, not subject to um, undue litigation because we've fallen through on some of these things. That's my concern. It is not anything against Candace at all. Um, I, I feel like she's out on an island by herself unprotected. Um, and then there are other areas in which, like I said, referring back to IT, that she's clearly in over her head unless she has some kind of a degree in computer science or information technology in that form. It's, it's a big bite and it's a huge obligation that we, as, as the court, as the court has to, um, address so that we can get into the twenty-first, twenty-fifth century, if you will. Because as we were talking about, um, having, being able to have online court. We don't have that option. Our IT support is, doesn't even have that. And I believe that there are courts all over the country that do online court, but we're not there. And we haven't been, and there doesn't seem to be any time in the future that that's gonna happen. And we need, we desperately need to come up to speed. Um, I want to see Candace be supported, and I don't feel at this point that she has been, that she is giving all the tools that she needs to be successful, aside from the frivolous lawsuits notwithstanding and the other things that are going on, um, with her professionally. I think, you know, she doesn't receive a demotion. She keeps her title. She keeps her position. She still gets to manage the people. She just has the additional protection of the city manager who runs everything else in our city as our CEO to help her, um, be successful in her job. And that's what I want to see her be, successful. And right now it's tenuous and I, I'm really concerned about her and I'm concerned about the court as well.
Councilmember Jurinsky.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hancock, I, I respect that, but, um, you know, if you were truly concerned about being brought up to the twenty-first century, um, you would care that our entire court is not ADA accessible. And when handicap people come in for, for jury duty, uh, most of the time we have to dismiss them. Our court administrator has stood up and, and fought for types of funding like this multiple times. And if you think that putting her under the city manager is going to provide her any sort of protection, my friend, you're wrong. Uh, I had to ask why, when the public safety master plan was brought forward, I raised the question, why is the court administrator, why is the courts and the detention center left out of this public safety master plan? You serve on the public safety committee with me. She's very much a part of public safety. Yet her entire, uh, organization, every one of her departments was left out of the public safety master plan. When Councilman Zivonic was on this council, myself, Councilman Zivonic, Councilman Sundberg, several of us, um, went to, uh, Jason, several of us went to Dan Brodman, asked for protection for Candace with frivolous lawsuit after frivolous lawsuit. She was provided no protection. If you think that this provides her any sort of protection, you're wrong. I, I, I've watched it. I, I, I've, I've watched it my entire time on council. We, we hired her shortly after I, I came onto council. So this does nothing but demean her. And, and we can say that it's not a demotion. But, but what this does is instead of answering to eleven and only answering to one, she can be fired by one instead of a conversation by eleven. So this is demeaning. This is a demotion. I understand there's, there's no pay decrease. But what this does to her, what this does to her subordinates looking at her, um, this is a demotion. And Mayor, for you to say that you're just, you're, you're tired of dealing things that with, that you shouldn't be dealing with. Well, we dealt with a lot of things with our prior city attorney that we shouldn't have been dealing with. Bad legal advice that led to litigation against us, all, all kinds of things. Um, and we let that go on for quite some time. And we never once discussed moving him to report to the city manager. Um, you know, and, and I, I, I just stated that there are emails produced that, that she wanted to ask for things. She did ask for things in her negotiation and was flat out told, no, the city isn't, isn't doing that. But then we hired two male account, council appointees right after her and they both got what she was asking for. This email exists. I have sent it to our city attorney. So, I, I mean, while I respect in theory what everybody is saying, this is nothing more than discrimination and, and, and this is nothing more than retaliatory. And not one person who serves on the committee that this spiraled out of, um, took her up on her email offer to meet with her one-on-one, to speak to her. Um, there were mistruths told and our colleague, Councilwoman Sundberg, caught one of those city employees in one of those mistruths. So this isn't just, again, litigation that will come forward for a breach of contract, which our city attorney's own admission, um, Candace's attorney is one of the top employee attorneys in the state. She disagrees. She, she believes this is absolutely a breach of contract. Um, you know, what's coming is discrimination. What's coming is a hostile work environment. So much so that when our city attorney first learned who her attorney is, um, he didn't put two and two together, that this is the same attorney that represented Candace on all of these frivolous lawsuits, which by the way, out of twenty-three, only one was sustained. This is one of the top, eh, eh, em- employee, employment attorneys in the state. And once our city attorney realized who she was, and I don't believe who she was, like representing her on, on these frivolous city lawsuits. I believe realizing who she was as one of the top, uh, state employment attorneys, he conflicted her out. So, um, you know, eh, as of right now, our court administrator, um, is obtaining a new, a new, a new attorney. Litigation is coming before us. It's not just a breach of contract that you all are being told that can be so fiercely defended by our city attorney. It is many more, uh, allegations that can and will be proven. Um, eh, eh, and, eh, eh, I mean, if, 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 if you, if you want to be a part of a vote that finds the city guilty in discrimination against a woman, our only female council appointee, that is what is coming for you. I mean, that is what is coming for you. And I know time and time again, people on this council roll their eyes and, oh, there goes Jurinsky again and blah, blah, blah. I, I, I have yet to be proven wrong. Um, so, I, I mean, do what you will, roll the dice. But you, you will be a part of litigation that finds this council discriminatory against our only female council appointee.
Motion to call for the question.
Second.
It's been, uh, moved by the mayor. Uh, the motion to call for the question has been seconded, uh, by Councilmember Bergen. Uh, call for the question. Or the vote, uh, I'm sorry. Um, uh, on the motion, um, uh, call for the question on the motion. It's called for the question.
So this is a two-thirds vote, Mayor, to vote to end debate and then move into a vote on the, the motion on the floor. So, Katie.
Mayor Kaufman, how would you like to vote?
Mayor, vote yes.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Casal, Mayor Poten Sundberg to immediately end debate and vote on the main motion.
So the motion passes. Brooke.
Brooke, Mayor, so now we're gonna vote on the underlying motion about whether or not this ordinance passes on second reading. So that's call for the vote on the, on thirteen A.
Call for the question on thirteen A.
Councilmember Gardner. The motion passes with six yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Jurinsky, Casal, Mayor Poten Sundberg, and Councilmember Gardner, absent.
Katie. Katie, this is Councilmember Gardner. My computer died when the vote happened. I, I'm a yes vote.
Yes, that, okay. The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Jurinsky, Casal, and Mayor Poten Sundberg.
Mayor, quick order.
I'm sorry, who's this?
Please, I just have a quick kind of order.
Oh, Councilmember Coombs.
Um, it's a question for City Attorney Solti. Um, what we just passed, does it allow the city attorney to summarily dismiss without a vote counsel, uh, court administrator?
So it would be the city manager. I know you, is it?
Sorry, I meant city.
Um, because this is a unique situation where, where Ms. Atkinson is a council appointee. She was started as a council appointee and now that, that it's been moved under, under the, the charter uh, for, uh, the city manager to make those decisions, because she has an underlying contract. If the city manager decided that there were issues, my advice to the city manager would be to go to council and make sure there was a support of at least majority of council, so we would meet the private contractual obligations. Um, but still work under the ordinance. By the way, as, as I, as I've stated to many of you before, as a legislative body, you don't, you don't contract away your legislative authority, and that's what you're doing here, but we will still follow uh, the contract that Ms. Atkin- Atkinson has, uh, with the city moving forward.
Mayor, quick order.
Uh, Councilmember Jurinsky.
Yeah, so, city attorney, why would you have to give the city manager legal advice on how to go about firing her?
Yeah, that question has been raised and I'm just gonna say I'd give legal advice to the city manager every day and, uh, to many of you, so.
And this is a subtle question. I mean, we're done with this. Um, Council, uh, mayor has no report, uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Mayor, thank you. Um, there are so many things, uh, um, and of course there are those on this council who would like to silence, as I try to say, a privately threatened century numerous. Um, when I use my first amendment rights, when I use my position as a six-year member of this council, um, having the right to speak. Um, and in relation to the death of Ray John Beltz, I have to say, of course it is practice, of course it is. Um, and I think the community is more outraged. Not because we have to undertake an investigation. We do that every time this happens, which has been unfortunately way too many. But because there have been not one but two press conferences in which details were revealed and a narrative was practiced. If it was just, we're giving the basic fact of the case, frankly, the community would recognize that as a fairly standard practice, but what happened was not that. It was a narrative designed to attack a deceased person um, and to give credibility, um, to the idea that that is justified for the facts that is seen by anyone, including the critical incident response team, these review that information. And so I will continue, when things like this happen, to speak up. And folks can continue to try to bully and harass and silence and use whatever mechanisms they have available, um, to try to stop what's been doing, but it's not. Um, I'm committed to serving this community, to hearing the things that people have to say, to understand the justified outrage at the lack of moving on to the key areas of our consent group, which is racially biased inclusion and acceptance.
Well, thank you. I, and I just want to say that, um, Councilmember Coombs and I were uh, at an NAHP meeting last Saturday where we got a very good presentation, uh, by uh, Sheriff Tyler Brown and by the, um, eighteen judicial district, Amy Patton, on the process, uh, when there's an officer involved shooting, uh, that it goes through this, um, um, CERT, uh, investigation, um, critical incident response team that is done outside of the city of Aurora, uh, and can take four to six months. And so it's important and, and certainly it's my position, uh, not to make statements uh, about, um, the incident, uh, until after the investigation is done. Uh, Councilmember Gardner.
No report.
Uh, Councilmember Jurinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with you that, um, uh, you know, there, there are outside investigations going on. This isn't just being investigated by APD. Uh, this is a very serious investigation that is going on and I don't think anybody has all of the facts right now. Um, and, you know, eh, any loss of life is, is, uh, tragic. Um, eh, you know, but I, I, I would like to just clarify one thing uh, for the public. It is now being made to seem, uh, that Jalen Sebron was shot and killed by an Aurora police officer, and that is not in fact the case. That was a shooting out of, um, Douglas County. Nevertheless, very tragic. Um, you know, this young man had a baby on the way with, set to be married. Um, you know, very, very tragic. Um, but, you know, I, 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 I also can't just sit back and, and allow a dogpile, um, on Aurora police officers. This CERT investigation is very serious and whatever the outcome of this investigation is, I will accept it. Um, and we will figure out how to move on and, and heal as a community.
Uh, Councilmember Casal.
All right, so, um, uh, I think a couple of weeks ago, uh, had the pleasure to be a part of the Aurora Water Tour. It was incredible. What a great job, uh, by Aurora Water Department. Uh, in fact, to have, uh, the best quality water in the country, so I'm proud of the team. Yeah, I was, you know, uh, with the tour with Councilman, uh, Franso. And also I had, uh, an opportunity, uh, to tour the New Aurora Mental Health Recovery Center. And, uh, I thought that this, uh, you know, that would be a good, another asset for, uh, Navigation Center for Aurora to tackle the crisis and the mental issues. And, um, this coming, uh, thirteen and fourteen, there's a, a big community event. It was a lot of foods. There was a lot of foods and cultural show at the Taste of Ethiopia. So this community, I mean, this event is free, so I'd like to invite everybody to attend that. And one more last thing, uh, as, you know, the mayor say, and, uh, Councilman, uh, Daniel says, uh, I really, you know, want to say this to the family member in the community, eh, eh, about the shooting. And so it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of multiple investigation are currently un, under, underway. So regarding the officer involved with the shooting, so, you know, I feel it, you know, every loss of life, regardless, is a tragedy. Uh, so this will be investigated. So, uh, I just want to say that, uh, thanks so much.
Council, uh, Mayor for Jim Sundberg. I'm sorry, Councilmember Memorial.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I, um, wanted to just share, I, uh, had the opportunity to tour the, um, I've been a big supporter, but had the actual opportunity to, um, tour the Paris Elementary, uh, School, um, project that was, um, uh, now, now the building serves as, um, uh, supporting, uh, different parts of our youth, um, mental health, positive, like, outcomes, um, places to go after school, just, um, they're trying to continue to, um, invest in the area, even though the school is closed. So, um, wanted to just, uh, give a shout out to Daniel Sampson, uh, driven by our ambitions for the invitation to, um, go tour the facility. They still have, um, uh, capacity for organizations who, I know I've been contacted so many times, um, for, uh, affordable, um, location for different businesses, maybe even nonprofits. Um, so just, um, I, there's a lot of incredible work going on. They really support, um, our diverse youth, um, and trying to meet them where they're at. They had, you know, um, a boxing ring, they had treadmills, and, and they work with licensed mental health professionals to really, uh, work with different youth, um, to try to build trust. They, they even had a recording studio. Um, and they really develop their programming based on what they're hearing from youth, um, youth in the, in the community. So, um, lots of really cool things. Um, if y'all are not aware of them, you should check them out, um, and support their work. That's all.
Uh, Mayor for Jim Sundberg.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I saw yourself and Councilwoman, um, Stephanie Hancock at TAPS Tragedy Assistance Program for Survivors, raising money for, for military families who've lost a loved one in the military. Uh, excellent music and fantastic dinner, very positive. I visited a brand-new school coming up in Horizon Uptown in Ward Two. It's an eighty-five million dollar P through eight state-of-the-art, modern school where staff and students from Clyde Miller will be transferred over there, and then the, the kids from Horizon Uptown will attend. That should be ready for school, um, next year, twenty twenty-six. I visited Aurora Mental Health and Recovery's Pathways to Home, which underwent a remodel. Uh, home, folks in the area experiencing need can walk in there for a cup of coffee, do their laundry, take a shower, get a, hooked, connected with a myriad of services, including, uh, housing, hopefully. I attended the Highline Canal's unveiling of some tree artwork by Chilean artist Adolfo Romero behind Hinkley High School. This gentleman makes carvings out of, uh, dead elm trees, which, uh, is really fantastic. Uh, I heard our police chief on, on the radio a couple of weeks ago talking about a task force for street takeovers. Uh, we do have a task force that's made thirty-one arrests and forty-seven toes in those efforts. Uh, let's see, in Ward Two, our Parks Recreation Open Space is really underway with making about eleven very significant improvements to parks and trail systems, which our residents are happy about. And then just with respect to the, the shooting, uh, of Rajon, uh, you know, that is a sad situation. It saddens me. And I've reflected upon that quite a bit, and there's, and there's questions that I have and, uh, that I have to wait on until an investigation comes out. But God bless him, excuse me, his, him, his family, and, uh, the police officer involved, and, and the witnesses there, that this, uh, traumatic event for certain, and our city did not need that. So, you know, God bless our city. Let's, let's be patient, and let's, let's let the facts come out through a couple of different, uh, very in-depth investigations. But God bless the family.
Uh, Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, sir. So I've got, uh, my town hall tomorrow, uh, at the Center for Active Adults, six thirty, eight PM. I will have the consent decree out there talking to the community, and also traffic will be there as well. Yes, I'd also like to extend my condolences to Rajon, uh, Stoffield's family. And know that you, you've got support of your community, certainly can lean on people there. And, uh, again, the same thing is, is we wait to the outcome. Uh, I hope we are all patient. I know the community is hurting really bad, had a lot of these things in the past few years. Uh, but I think we have to come together collectively, uh, and make things better. And I think it's going to take both sides, uh, APD and community to come together to have real dialogue. And so I'm hoping, hoping and looking forward to those dialogues to continue, not just be a one-off. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate that. And, um, I had the opportunity, uh, with you and along with, uh, Councilmember Sundberg, to go to the TAPS, um, gala this past weekend. You know, it, it's great to honor our fallen heroes, and we have to remember too that not only them, but their families are impacted. And the TAPS organization helps support these families, young children who are dealing with trauma, losing, um, a loved one, um, in the line of duty and service to our country. So I believe they raised over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for these young people and their families to help assist them, um, going through the grief process, and also to help them get stabilization in their homes. Because, you know, when you lose a major breadwinner, it does, it is a jarring thing. Um, and, and kudos and congratulations to all those who, uh, participate in that effort. Also yesterday, the mayor and I were at, um, what is it, uh, the farm, celebrating Aurora's unique history, the, uh, Historical Preservation Commission, who's been, uh, working for forty years. And if you've ever taken that walk from East Middle School to Delaney Farms, you know what I'm talking about, because that's quite a trek. Um, when my kids were in middle school, they actually walked over there. Um, and so, you know, the history of Aurora is important. It's diverse and it's as patchwork as our, as our gritty town. We have a lot of challenges, we have a lot of opportunities, and we, as a city, um, have a challenge to work together to make sure that, uh, we, uh, serve all the situ, uh, all the citizens in our community. With that said, tomorrow I will be, or Wednesday, I will be at Goodwill Industries, who will be graduating a class from high school, getting their high school diploma. These are adults who are twenty-one years of age or older who've gone back to school to get their high school diploma and, uh, because they wanted that diploma, and it means so much to them as they go on to future educational endeavors. Um, like my colleagues, I want to expend a heartfelt, um, condolences to the family in this tragic shooting, this Stubblefield family. And I pray that this family comes to find peace, closure, and justice in this situation, allowing the process to work itself out, and keeping in mind that we, as a city, are united in finding the truth wherever it may lead. And, um, to know that, um, eh, if you want to reach out to eh, any of us, um, if we can be of assistance, of help, at least we can offer a prayer. I'm a faith person. I believe in the Lord and that he heals the broken-hearted. And so I am praying for your strength through this time, um, and that you will find comfort even in this situation. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lawson. Well, let me, I'll come back to Councilmember Lawson. Councilwoman Bergen. Uh, Councilwoman Lawson, Councilwoman Bergen, okay. Well, um, seeing no further business before the Aurora City Council, uh, we are adjourned.